Call the order at seven o'clock. Threes rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just want to remind everybody, we are being televised live on Van Buren Television, Channel 12. Clerk Wright, would you begin by calling the roll?
Yes, Trustee Martin.
Here.
Trustee White.
There.
Trustee Frazier.
Here.
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee Butt.
Here.
Our Clerk Wright is President, Supervisor, right now.
Thank you.
We have a call.
Thank you. Thank you, Clerk. Before we begin this evening, May is what's called Honor and Remember Month. We are going to be reading the names of our local fallen heroes who have died making the ultimate sacrifice for their native land, for their lake, for the nation, and then we will have a moment of silence. Before that, though, I'd like to have a few moments for Leroy Page. Leroy Page is the Michigan Chapter Director of the Honor and Remember, and he has a short statement he'd like to make.
Thank you Supervisor, Matt Munnera. Michigan Chapter is asking the local communities to declare the month of May as Honor and Remember Month in our campaign to recognize all those who served in our armed forces and gave the ultimate sacrifice during their service for our country. Van Buren Township, Sumter Township, and the city of Perry, Michigan, and Chia Wasty County have been very supportive of Michigan Chapter and Honor and Remember Incorporated. This is definitely deeply appreciated. Over 2 million men and women have sacrificed their lives in recognizing to save the life of a comrade in arms or an innocent bystander while home on leave. It could have been someone lost in a drowning accident while serving our armed forces. Honor and Remember wishes to thank you for your participation in the past that helped acknowledge those fallen heroes in tri-community area that lived in the tri-communit-- in the tri-communit area that gave the ultimate sacrifice in World War II, Korea, and Vietnam. We appreciate your cooperation tonight in calling up the names of the fallen heroes that are actually on the memorial in Horizon Park. We also appreciate your contacting your cable provider and placing the names on the cable system. I saw that tonight, today, and it was a job well done. Appreciate that. We are in the process of a deeper commitment, not only with Honor and Remember Month of May, but a project that is ongoing that started on April 7th and will end on August 5th. With a process, with a actual run that has started in Fort Irwin, California, and will end up in Arlington National Cemetery, taking five months, 19 states, 6,000 miles, and the names of over 20,000 fallen heroes that were lost since the year 2000 with the start of the war on terror. Those names are mentioned every mile at a hero marker that the core runner will stop, call out the names, do a salute to families that may be at that hero marker, and then they will continue on to the next mile marker. This is a deeply moving maneuver, a program, and if there's anybody interested in following this, www-runforthefallen.org is the place to check it out. There will be a live feed from 7:00 in the morning to 5:00 at night for those who want to see what's going on. It's easy to follow. I have also placed brochures over on the table if anybody's interested that you may know of somebody that's lost a family, a loved one. If you could take that information and use it for your own benefit. My final point is, we as a nation and the state, the state of Michigan, must hold up our goals to our families in respect and show them our concern for their well-being by standing with them in their loss of a loved one. We must do all we can to never forget what our service people have done that shows the determination that we have to live as a free nation. Greater love has no man than to lay down his or her life for another. We owe them, even if we don't know them. Thank you for your time and your cooperation.
Yeah, they'd like to shake your hand. Come on by.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for serving.
Thank you for serving.
We have names to read. The names come from the tri-community area, Belleville area, and Van Buren. We're going to start over with Sherri Frazier. You've got a list of names here. These are the names of people that have fallen in battle from our area, and I believe you have World War II at the top of yours.
Reggie Dunn.
Iton.
James E. Isley II. Marlin Ted Galloway, World War II.
How many do you have?
Two.
You only have two of them? Okay.
I have World War II also. Edwin B. Baggett, Richard L. Lemansky, Gerald H. Byrd, Michelle A. Golden, Anthony Kelitz, James P. Kellag, Thomas G. Rickerman, and Eugene Duco.
In World War II, Albert Harris Senior, James Kerskiertin, John Vervadik, Floyd Chamberlain, Steve Ballant, Sanford O'Shuler, Clemens Ojeki, Walter Renhuckel.
World War II, Joseph Donaghyson, Randolph Beluski, Michael S. Watsonick, David L. Henninger, Alex Zinke, Aubrey Mills, George Carroll, Charles C. Noah.
World War II, Robert E. Green, Albin J. Barton Jr., Frank Paget, Willard F. Bortz, Robert Francisco, Jack Palmer, Robert J. Skokie, Edward Reimut.
Go ahead.
None. I don't have any.
What?
I don't have any World War II.
Well, do you have anybody?
Yes.
We're done. We're there now.
Vietnam War, Greg Allen Barker, Edward Allen Bees, Roger Dean Bulifon, Kenneth Laj Fulton, Gary Allen Kirchner, Robert Gordon Petromo, James Shelton Stacy, Thomas L. Cleland.
Special Class IV, William D. Gogurt Jr., James W. Davis, Gerald W. Dirkoff, Ernie L. Bradford, Walter L. Clare, and I also have fallen heroes that served and died but not in combat, Herman Wilkins, Bruce R. Burke, and Kevin Towler.
Thank you. We just got to take a moment of silence for these names.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry.
Corian Moore, Wayne T. Roster, William C. Jewell Jr., Clyde E. Petrie William Shred Voe Fitch Jr., Walter H. Billings.
Thank you. A moment of silence. Thank you. We're going to be moving ahead now. Thank you very much, Mr. Page. Of course, we'll do it again next year just for the families that have survived too, so. All right. We're going to begin with our first item tonight, which is going to be the approval of the revised agenda. The consent agenda, item number 12, has been added to the agenda. Can I get a motion for approval of the revised agenda?
Through the chair. I make a motion we approve the agenda if amended.
Support.
Supervisor. I have Clerk Wright, support. Trustee White.
On the regular new business agenda, I request that we move item number five.
I don't know where it is.
It's always at the bottom.
Item number five, to what?
To consider approval of resolution 2018-06 Public Censure and Penalty.
Where do you want to move it to?
Remove it. I want it to remove.
Oh.
Will we be talking about it later on, Trustee White, during the meeting?
I'd like to remove it from the agenda.
Totally?
Yep.
Okay.
Is this support?
Can I ask why?
Why? Because in America, you are not guilty. You are proven innocent, and you are guilty in a court of law. And I think that Ms. Frazier has been treated very badly by a lot of people, and I think the harassment and the words that have been used against her and the possible removal of the penalty that I understand is inappropriate. And I had a discussion with the Director of the Water and Sewer Commission, and he personally told me, and I think he told the Supervisor and maybe a couple of other people sitting on this board, members, that she was doing an excellent job with the Water and Sewer. And as far as I'm concerned, it would be a bigger detriment to Van Buren Township to remove her from the Water and Sewer Commission than it will be to leave her on it.
I'm sorry. I thought you meant the consent agenda, number five, the prepaid list of maintenance. My mistake.
Okay, so new business is number five.
I didn't realize you were removing the--
Yeah, it doesn't have support. So, we're moving forward. I have a motion for approval by Treasurer Butt. It's support by Clerk Wright to approve the revised agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This motion passes. Thank you. Next one is the revised consent agenda. I'm going to call, I'm going to ask for a motion for approval from Trustee Martin, who will read it.
Through the chair. I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda consisting of items, number one, excuse me, board meeting minutes of April 17, 2018, prepaid list of April 19, 2018, prepaid list of April 26, 2018, prepaid list of May 3, 2018, prepaid list of May 10, 2018, voucher list of May 1, 2018, voucher list of May 15, 2018, approval of the contract between the township and Zambelli Fireworks for the 2018 fireworks show, approval of the purchase of two Dell RR440 servers and storage rack, approval of the appointment of Gerald McKelvey to the Water and Sewer Commission with a term to expire June 1, 2019, approval of the appointment of Amos Grissette as a full member of the Board of Zoning Appeals with a term to expire December 1, 2020, approval of the police officers' labor council patrol and dispatch contract.
Thank you, Trustee Martin. Can I get support?
Support.
Thank you, Trustee Miller. Okay, it's a consent agenda, so I have a motion for approval, and I have support, all in favor.
Did you ask for a discussion?
Not on a consent agenda.
Well, if I did--
And then, you know what? Let's approve, and then you could, we could have a discussion. I know what you wanted to say.
Okay.
So, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Trustee Frazier. Are you, yeah, this--
Well, I'd just like to congratulate Gerald McKelvey for stepping up to serve on the Water and Sewer, and Amos Grissette for the Board of Zoning. And also, I'd like for you to just give a small, a small synopsis of the police officers' and dispatch contract for the public. Our police go above and beyond and do a great job, and having a contract this early is a remarkable thing. And I think it's, has it already been voted on by--
It's been ratified by the union. It's up to you.
Yeah, so it's probably a good thing to let the community know how we appreciate our police officers.
It is. We identify the cost of living as the amount that we would only allow it to go up. We kept it there, and so it's within 2% per year for four years, 8%, but they went for 3.311. They don't have to wear ties anymore, or, excuse me, yeah, they don't have to wear ties, but they still do have to wear hats. What other, some of the, they have a new, they have some new jackets that they're going to be wearing, which are going to be providing a little bit more support, and they're going to also provide a little bit better protection for them. Can't really think of much else.
They approved a way of, for the sergeant rank for the interview and the promotional process.
You guys are the ones that negotiated. And then I want to go back to, because I just saw Mr. McKelvey walking, so. All right, that's about all I can tell you on that. These two do that negotiation.
Through the chair.
I know we have Mr. McKelvey here this evening, and I would like to personally thank him along with the board, and was wondering if he could come up to the podium and reintroduce himself to the community.
Cheryl, we did not see you, I did not see you over there, otherwise I would have done that.
He's pretty hard to mess.
Well, actually, I kind of looked up and down the board table to see who's talking. I don't look out there very often. Cheryl's a longtime political, active guy, so we're happy to have you. I know you're back in the community, so you have to leave us for a few years, but--
One year.
One year? Okay. All right. Would you like to shake hands?
So, he's a community activist that has a wide range of expertise in a lot of areas.
It's good to see you again.
I know we're missing a Supervisor in the past because of some of your actions to take him out. I hope I don't fall that same.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Cheryl. We love you too. Glad you moved back. All right, we're moving on. Public hearing, we have none, excuse me. Yes. Pardon me? And now correspondence, which we have, we have a little bit of correspondence, and then we're going to go to a presentation. The first correspondence is from our police. Take a look at this. The Police Department has been receiving multiple complaints from residents about vehicles parking over the sidewalks in their neighborhood. Vehicles that are parked on the sidewalks are a violation of Michigan code and our ordinances. In an effort to educate the public and garner compliance, officers will be attaching a notice of violations on vehicles that are parked on the sidewalk. For the next couple of weeks, it will be a warning ticket. If the compliance is not, obviously, in about two weeks, these change from warning tickets. So, we're getting a lot of complaints from residents, a lot of mothers that are pregnant with strollers, bikers, people riding out into the streets, enough so that we've gone this route. So, see this thing on your car, please know that, fix it, because the next one is not going to be the reminder. Also, recently, a letter I got here from Mr. and Mrs. Harper, kind of a nice letter. Recently, we received a call about a serious water issue at their house. They were out of town for an extended stay, and the person in charge of billing, our billing water clerk, Karen, noticed their water bill was out of control, kind of a smart meter. She became concerned and tried to contact the home. She was unable to reach us. A township representative, Brad, came to our home to find it was, if everything was okay, find out if everything was okay. At this point, our neighbor was outside and was able to, was able to allow Brad to come into their home. He was greeted by a very big mess, at least 12 inches of water in their basement. Brad was also assisting our neighbor, Charlie Burrell, and we were grateful for all Brad's help. Both Karen and Brad basically went above and beyond the scope of their job. Our billing clerk noticed that their water usage was spiking, and she sent somebody out there. It was a wonderful thing, and thank you for Karen. She's a, she's a great employee, so. Also, from the Police Department of the City of Belleville, thanking again our police. This is from Chief Bearman to myself. I wanted to personally thank, and most importantly, importantly, thank the Van Buren Police and Fire Departments for their assistance in dealing with the tragedy that occurred on April 25th. It was involving the railroad and a pedestrian on the railroad tracks that bordered our two venues. Chief Wright called me moments after the incident occurred, offering our department's assistance, which we readily accepted. They were a tremendous asset, taking measurements and pictures, assisting in the collection of evidence, and giving help to our officers in conducting interviews in the investigation. I cannot say enough about the cooperation and assistance your department has given us, not only on this occasion, but on several occasions. Director Lorraine, Chief Jason Wright, have been outstanding in offering their assistance in the communications between our two departments, reflect highly on what police departments and police executives are all about. You have a truly professional team, and I would appreciate it if you would relay my thanks to them. I do. That's it for my correspondence. Does anybody else have correspondence? Very now, we're into the presentation. Well, maybe I've--
The algae bloom.
That's right now, I think.
Oh.
That's what this is.
Yeah. Okay. Correspondence, the presentation of the algae bloom. Director?
Good evening, Board. Tonight, per the request of the Supervisor, I and Trustee White, I am here, I was about to say, I am here to talk about what happened last year as part of the Michigan Department of Environmental Qualities Harmful Algae Bloom Survey that they did for 2017. The MDEQ is looking to develop stronger predictive tools for monitoring harmful algae blooms across southeastern Michigan and the state, and they wanted to also look at Michigan lakes to determine why some lakes are at higher risks for these algae blooms than others. So, what they decided to do is they went out and partnered with five different universities. The universities that they worked with, Wayne State, Lake Superior State, Northern Kentucky University, as well as the two other smaller schools in Kentucky associated with Lake, Northern Kentucky University. They basically found residents on Belleville Lake and other lakes, volunteers, who are willing to take samples throughout the, throughout the year of the lake water when they saw presence of algae and when they didn't see presence of algae. And they also agreed to have a monitoring unit at their dock along the water so that they can be monitored and data can be collected. These methods, the ideal goal, the ultimate goal, is to create a way for a picture to be taken of the water that is under an algae bloom, and that picture can be a determinant of whether or not there is a harmful algae bloom or just a regular old algae bloom. We received the first set of results from the 2017 summer study, and a lot of the data was collected by one of our residents, David Brownlee, who is the Chairperson of the Environmental Commission and does a fantastic job. He worked very closely with the students and the graduate assistants and professors on this. Basically, what they found for Belleville Lake is that our, our lake is well below the level that both the World Health Organization and the federal government says is a problem for cryptosporidium, which is the algae bloom, the harmful algae bloom. Michigan has not yet set an advisory for what is harmful or not, so we have to use the World Health Organizations and the federal governments. So, basically, the first year of studies basically says that our lake is a normal, healthy, eutrophic lake that sometimes gets an algae bloom. They're asking for the same residents to continue participating this year and also looking for more. If people are interested and live on the lake and are interested in participating in the study, please contact our office and residents, or if, come to contact me at the Developmental Services Desk, and I can get you in touch with Dr. David Slag, he's got one of those funny names, Slag, and the Hab Research Team at Lake Superior State. And with that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
So, what are the health hazards of being in the water when this algae bloom is in place? Are there any health effects?
Well, when the algae, when a toxic algae bloom is in place--
Yes.
We did not have a toxic algae, toxic algae bloom in the lake, and we have not seen one.
Okay.
But if we had a toxic algae bloom in the lake, you would not want to, you would not, you want to avoid body contact, and you also want to make sure you don't ingest any of that water, because the algae forms a toxin called microsystems, which are harmful to the liver, and they also, they're very similar to, if you remember, two summers ago, they shut down the water system in Toledo. This is exactly why they shut down the water system in Toledo. The micro, myosystems, the microsystems basically prevented them from using that drinking water for, or using it for drinking water. So, you want to avoid body contact, and you also don't want to get it in your mouth and ingest it. If we have a normal, I don't want to say that it's a good algae bloom, but a normal algae bloom that's not producing toxins, you don't want to really get it on you, because that algae also collects stuff, other items in the water, but it's not, you know, it's not going to hurt you or impact you, or swimming in the lake isn't going to be an issue. But with this study, we'll be able to, hopefully in the next few years, use this data to create a method to, I send a picture to the researchers, and they can say, yes, that's safer, no, it's not, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director. All set? Okay. Moving on. We are now down to, does anybody else have any correspondence? I already asked that. Okay. Next item is public comment. This is an area where you can make public comment about things we're due to talk about today, if anybody wants to come up and make comment. I'll ask more time. Come on up. Go to the podium. You're not required to, but if you'd like to give your name, you're welcome to.
Okay. I'm not sure if this is even on it now after this comment made by Mr. White, but--
It is on. It is on.
It is. Okay. I am questioning why someone can shoplift, whether you think it's a witch hunt or not, being caught is being caught. And is there any shame involved when you do that? And you know you did something. I just wonder, are you going to resign, or what is, what goes here? How does this work?
I am not going to resign.
So, even if you shoplift, and it doesn't look good for your community--
I am not going to resign, and I'm sure you've made mistakes in your life.
No, not like that.
I apologize to the community. Oh, no, you haven't?
No, I don't shoplift. I'm sorry. I paid for my stuff.
Is that the only sin that's allowed?
No, we don't talk back. You're not supposed to respond.
Well, she asked me a question.
I know she did, and I try and let things go.
Okay, I'm sorry. I shouldn't have said, I know there's no comment.
No, you're welcome. You have free speech.
You're welcome for your opinion to express.
All I'm asking is that, is there any recourse if you are found guilty? What do you do? I mean, this is a community. People see you. You're on our board. We trusted you. It's not a shocking thing to ask you.
I'm sure that Ms. Wright put you up to this, and your good friend and your neighbor and--
Okay, you know what? This is way out of line.
You were here last--
You know--
It's not true, though.
Okay.
Really, truly--
You do not do that.
She's insulting me.
I'm not insulting. I just wonder what the--
Okay, you made your point.
Okay, I'm done, but I just wanted to ask if there was any, anything--
And we can impose limited sanctions, limited censures, very limited, and that is what the number five is about.
That's all I want to know, because this is our community, and we all pay these taxes to support it. And I expect-- And I expect the people that represent us to be honest. That's all I have to say.
You could recall. You could start a recall.
It'd be a lot more...
Okay. You know what? No more talking back and forth. This is her time.
Supervisor, I'd like to respond.
No, you can't.
Talk with me.
No, you can't.
She mentioned my name.
I don't care if she mentioned your name. She had, she had the podium, she had the right to speak and it's not your right to speak back. And she, okay.
Through the chair.
You can go ahead, Clerk Wright.
I'd just like to make a statement that I hope we get this policy in place because Mrs. Wright is not here tonight. I don't know this lady in this audience. We never met, I never met her before in my life. My wife has never met her before in her life and I think that's just totally wrong for you to call her name out here tonight, her not being here to respond. That's all.
Yeah. All right. Is there anybody else wishing to speak? Anybody else? Hearing now, we're moving on. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, to consider approval of Resolution 2018-07, amendments to the Resolution 2013-05, the Board of Trustees Meeting Conduct Policy. This conduct policy, first of all, can I get a motion for approval?
I make a motion.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion for approval and I have a second. Okay. For the, for the public, this is a new conduct policy, basically to try and lay out how this, the board works. The old conduct policy basically laid out how the audience worked. This was a rewrite. It's, it says basically that the maker of the motion shall be the first to speak, the second of the motion shall be the second to speak. Members may speak twice for three minutes. Members will be polled. After that, if they go to another round, remarks must be on point and to the issue or else the speaker can lose their time. And boarding meetings, board meetings shall end after two and a half hours. We will complete whatever issue we are on and of course, public comment will always be added at the end, although no other comment would be allowed. And since trustee Fraser made the motion, she goes first.
We can extend the two and a half hours.
By a vote.
By a vote, yeah. Because I'm the one that brought that up because it was used on another board that I served on. And also, I'm never in favor of limiting trustees and particularly the community's right to speak. I'm never in favor of that. Time limits, I think, impose undue restrictions and it has a tendency to manipulate and stir the, the conversation in one direction. So I'm not in favor of the time limits, but I'm willing to support it and give it a try. We can always, I believe that yesterday at the work study, supervisor, you said that we would go back to it after 90 days to see if it, how it was working, just to evaluate it. I believe that's what you said.
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. So, but whenever a community member comes forth and wants to speak, I think we should hear them out and hear their concern and they shouldn't, I'm not here on a time schedule. I'm here to listen to the community and their concerns. And two and a half hours that I spend, if I have to spend that long, it's well, it's well-used time as far as I'm concerned and I'm not in a rush to get out. And even if we had, I've never, last year, never seen more than three people speak, maybe four or at any board meeting. So the time limits are a concern.
Trustee Miller, do you have anything to say?
Well, I have mixed emotions and mixed feelings on the time limits for the Board of Trustees, but I'm willing to give it a shot. Let's see how it works and see if we can't make these meetings more productive. So I am in agreeance with coming back in 90 days and reevaluating, but I think this will be more efficient in how we conduct ourselves.
Anybody else have anything I'd like to add? Just wait.
Chair. I am completely against voting for this. Now, we'll be voting no on it for two of the reasons that the two trustees, ladies trustees mentioned. A member shall not speak more than two times on a given question, three minutes the first time, three minutes the second time. There's a lot of times when we have an item on the agenda where you can speak one minute on it. There's times when we have an item on the agenda where you may need to speak five minutes and on the second time around, you may need to speak another five minutes. To me, this is a shutdown of active, outspoken members of the, of the board and there's a lot of times that there's issues that need to be bought for about it and you understand that this is draft eight, I think, on this. So if it took eight drafts on this to bring this to the board, then there's an issue with it. And, and I know I made a lot of suggestions on everything, but shutting down a trustee, we are voted in by the electorate of the township, the township presidents, and we should be, have the freedom to talk with our residents and speak to our concerns in a board meeting. That's what we are here for, to spend our township residents' money in an appropriate manner and to make sure that all of our regulations and resolutions are to benefit our township residents. That's our job, is to work to benefit the lifestyle, public safety of our residents. And, and I'm totally against Rule 8.2. I think that's very inappropriate to try to shut down, right, this 8.2, Rule 8, 8.2. And I'm also against just any board member calling for a point of order. That is just the chairperson's job, to call for a point of order. And we're going to have the wild west when we start having other trustees to shut down other trustees on a point of order. That is the chairperson's job. So to me, I don't believe in trying to get things done just to get them done and get them done fast and get out of here. That's, that's not my style and I, I will not support this. I can't support this like this. I understand this is the seventh or eighth draft and, and there's been a lot of things added and a lot of things removed, but it still is not appropriate.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing now, I have a motion by trustee Fraser, supported by trustee Miller. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call vote is triggered. Clerk Wright, would you please call roll call?
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee White?
No.
Trustee Fraser?
Yes.
Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Treasury Bud?
Yes.
Yes for me, supervisor?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item number two, new business, to consider approval of a second. This is our second and final reading of an ordinance 040318. It is an ordinance to the Charter Township of Van Buren Zoning Ordinance 5217-2, to modify certain accessory building regulations. Can I get a motion before we begin on this second reading?
Through the chair.
Treasury Bud?
Make a motion, we approve the second and final reading of ordinance 040318 to the Charter Township of Van Buren Zoning Ordinances 5217, hearing two, to modify certain accessory building regulations.
Support.
Clerk Wright. Director, could you take it away?
Very simply, this is the second time we presented this material for the ordinance. It was passed by the planning commission. It deals simply with adjusting the minimum setbacks for accessory building structures to a more flexible five-foot setback in the residential agricultural sections. It also allows the approval process for accessory buildings that exceed lot coverage makes in non-residential districts much easier for these businesses that want to do an accessory building. It makes the process and the hoops they have to jump through much easier for them because really the accessory building rule approval structure is more for the residential side for these types of structures. Finally, concrete floor and rat wall in agricultural districts. The requirement of having the concrete floor and rat wall for detached accessory buildings in high-density areas is important, but in agricultural areas, it kind of, a small structure like that, it makes, sometimes it makes the structure a little more costly than it needs to be, especially since the rodents aren't in those locations because they're not as dense. Detached shed exemptions, this basically allows any residential user to build a minimum of 120-foot square feet shed in addition to the permitted lot coverage. It doesn't count towards your lot coverage. So it basically guarantees everyone that they can have a shed if they want to, as long as it meets the setbacks and requirements. These are the items in front of you today. They passed the planning commission and one reading already. I present to you the second reading. If you have any questions, may I have the answer?
No. Pretty much covered this. Any questions? Okay. Hearing now, this is a ordinance, which is a law, which, this is our second reading, so it becomes a law and passes, therefore it is a roll call vote. Clerk Wright, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Fraser?
Yes.
Treasury Bud?
Yes.
Yes for me, supervisor?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Thank you, Board.
Director. All right. Next item, Steever?
Yeah.
Okay. To consider approval of the purchase of an Avaya IP Office Server Edition via Voice-Over- Internet Protocol phone system. Can I get a motion before we begin discussion?
Supervisor, I make a motion to consider approval of the purchase of Avaya IP Office Server Edition VoIP phone system.
Got a motion, I got support. Director, could you take, take us down?
Sure. Thank you. A total of three vendors bid on the new Avaya IP Office Phone System project. After going through each bid, it was determined that SunTel Services was the best overall bid. SunTel Services gave a great demo here at the township in April and they answered technical questions for over two and a half hours. I received positive feedback from fellow IT directors in Novi, Livonia, Dearborn, and Taylor, who have had SunTel Services install this phone system at their respective cities. SunTel Services' client list of cities, townships, counties, and private sector businesses in southeastern Michigan was another impressive part of their bid. The other two bidders did not even come close in this portion. In addition to the previously mentioned positive remarks, SunTel Services was also the low bidder. This project will take approximately 90 days after the contract is signed and parts are received. There's a one-year warranty on parts and labor and after the first year, the township's maintenance will be approximately $2,700 per year. The life expectancy of this phone system is projected to be at least 10 years with proper maintenance and updates. With that, I would like to ask the board's approval for this new phone system so as to continue our efforts to keep the township's technology infrastructure up to date. At this point, I'd be happy to answer any further questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
It's a long time overdue.
It is. It's, it's, it's a phone system, so don't be getting excited over a phone, but quite frankly, it's a backbone of what we do, so we need it. Thank you, Director.
All right. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, yesterday, we brought up the fact that there was a discrepancy between the bids of $61,000, $21,000, and then the low bidder, SunTel. I'm all for SunTel. Whenever you change your phone system, though, there's going to be questions and kinks to work through and I'm pleased that you did your homework in calling the other communities and finding out how their service was because that's crucial when you make a big change like this. And I also requested that in the future that we come up with a, maybe a bid format that gives the vendor the prices, bid, and why there might have been a discrepancy. You know, maybe one bid overbid on something because he thought, you know, we needed it or, you know.
Sure.
And in the future, I'd like to see that rather than just the one bid sheet that says SunTel was there. I, I understand from you that AT&amp;T and...
Integration Partners.
Yeah, Integration Parts were offered the opportunity to come to the township, but they did not. So I just want everybody to know, it's a, it's a good system and I commend your efforts on updating our phone system.
Thank you.
Okay. I have a motion with approval from treasurer, excuse me, trustee Miller and support by treasurer Bud, to consider approval of the purchase of Avaya IP Office Server Edition phone system. Hearing no further discussions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director. Number four, to consider approval of the bus transportation agreement between the township and the Van Buren Public Schools systems for the summer camp program. Can I get a motion for approval?
Support.
Supervisor?
I support the approval of the bus transportation agreement between the township and Van Buren Public Schools for the summer camp program.
Support.
I have a motion by trustee Fraser and support by trustee Miller. Director, could you talk to us?
Sure. Good evening, Board. Nice to see everyone. For several years, the Parks and Recreation Department have utilized the Van Buren Public Schools Transportation Department school buses for the summer camp program. This agreement simply outlines information for both entities, such as deadlines for camper address information, field trip schedules, and rates for the bus drivers. This agreement shall be enforced for a period of three years, starting June 18th, 2018, the first day of summer camp. Either party has a right to terminate this agreement without cause at any time by giving, what we have is 10 days, but I did speak with the superintendent today and he said he has no problem changing that to 30 days for next year. So we'll just leave it at 10 days for this year, something that we'll have in writing for the other party. So this agreement is just pretty straightforward. It just keeps things running efficiently. So I'm happy to answer. Any questions? Anybody has?
Any questions?
I'd just like to say, I think it's a win-win for the school district and the township because we are providing the school buses that we know are operated by licensed and certified bus drivers and bus drivers want the, want the work in the summer and so it'll be a good situation for our residents' kids because we'll be transporting them safely and it'll, it'll help everybody, I think. And being three-year agreement, I think, makes sense to extending it.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion, I have a motion by trustee Fraser, support by trustee Miller for the bus agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Move on to our next, our next is item number five, to consider approval of Resolution 2018-06, a public censure and penalty. First of all, can I get a motion for approval?
Supervisor.
Trustee Miller?
I make a motion to consider approval of Resolution 2018-06, public censure and penalty.
Support.
I have a motion by trustee Miller and support by treasurer Bud. Does anybody wish to speak on this?
I'd like to speak on it.
Okay.
As we all know and understand the circumstances here, and I've made this statement several times already, in America, you're always proposed to be innocent until you are proven guilty. And I think this board is making a rush to judgment for whatever reason and I believe it simply is because trustee Fraser speaks out a lot, speaks her mind, just as I do and I firmly believe that in the future, you will find some way to try to censor me and it's not going to be that easy if it comes down my road because this board has a tendency to rush, 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 rush. Get it done and get out of here to go home or go wherever you want to and everything else. And it's not the way to do things. We do a lot of things here, as example on the policy we just had where we rushed through it and I have to admire this young gentleman sitting here, executive assistant, Selman. He had eight or nine different drafts on this and, and he sent me the finalized draft last night, just before nine o'clock and I'm sure he was at work at 7:30 and he was working at nine o'clock. And, and that is inappropriate to put someone in that position where they've got to work 12 or 14 hours. It's just not correct. It would never happen to a union employee and we need to step back, take a look at how we're doing things and don't rush to judgment, don't rush to get things done in a hurry. It seems like we're all... It seems like we're always in a hurry. Got to get it done, get it done, get it done, get it done. You know, when you play baseball, you've got three strikes. You've got two strikes, you've still got another strike to go, and you're not out until the third strike, and I'm just a little bit upset as to the way that we try to rush through things, have comments at the board that should never have happened. We just need a better analysis of how we do things, how our performance is, and how we present stuff to the board. For example, we're always presenting stuff to the board, and it appears like the four trustees are the last people to know what's going on. It happened yesterday at work-study, and it's been happening too frequent lately, and just like I stated, we received this last night at nine o'clock, you know?
Have you talked about the conduct?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was nine o'clock, 8:47 or something, when we received this last night.
That's because we wanted to get it out fast. Those are the chains that were made at eight o'clock.
Okay. I understand that. I understand that.
I'm sorry, we shouldn't be talking.
Right.
Yeah, go ahead.
But I received this at 8:47 last night.
This is not what we're talking about.
We're really, you're out of, I mean, we're discussing the censure of the trustee Frazier.
No, you're correct.
So you're going off on a tangent.
But what I'm saying is, this is an example of how we rush things to get them done, and I was using this as an example, and that's another thing that I don't like, is how it says in here that we have to stick to it, and we have to use historical facts when we're doing some of this stuff. We cannot simply take something, pull it forward, and rush through to get it done. It's got to be taking our time to make sure that we get it right.
Does anybody else have anything else they would like to say?
I do.
Yeah, Trustee Frazier.
I would just like to say that I did everything that I was supposed to. I apologized. I've, you know, I don't know what you want. You're vindictive, and you're petty, and you're, it's difficult to sit here, especially next to Ms. Miller and Ms. Bud here, because Ms. Miller couldn't even sit next to me last week. She had to move her seat, and so I don't know why I'm worthy this evening for her to sit here, but, you know, it's vindictive. You already drug me through the mud in public for three hours. I think that should suffice anyone. I have not had an overwhelming concern from residents regarding a mistake. I'm a Christian. I believe God has forgiven me. I have to forgive myself, and if you can't forgive me, then I'm sorry for you. I have done everything I can to show that I am going to stay here. I'm going to rise above this, as my mother would tell me. One mistake does not define your life. I have a long legacy of community activity in this community. It is not going to define my life, and I am going to, I am a better person than that. I'm not, I haven't been raised that way, and I'm sorry for every, the turmoil and the confusion that it's caused the township, but I've done my part. I did not go to the MTA. I withdrew from that because I didn't want Supervisor McNamara to be embarrassed when he was up there, although I don't think he got that many comments from it. I know that we think that these things are, I don't know. That's all I want to say. I don't think it's in the best interest to remove me from the Water and Sewer Commission. I've participated. I've been a contributing member on that board, and I've done my part for the residents, and I applaud Jim Taylor, the director, for working with the commission and making us understand what it takes to run the Water and Sewer Department, and how we have to go about trying to keep our rates as low as possible for our residents, and I think he's done an exceptional job on that. But I've tried to be there, and I've participated and done my job and my duty, and I will continue to be here unless I am recalled. So that's it.
Trustee Miller.
I want to explain why I moved my seat. First of all, I asked that my seat be moved to the other side of the room, not only to be able to see you and look at you during that process, but also, Sherry, your, Trustee Frazier, your hands can fly in the heat of emotion. I didn't want to take a hit, I'll be honest with you. I didn't want to get in harm's way.
Oh, my goodness.
I'm being perfectly honest with you.
I sat next to you.
Can I, can I talk? Can I have the floor now?
I don't think I worked up to you that much.
Two, when you, when, as I, when you get worked up, you raise your voice, and I've lost some hearing in my right ear, and it echoes, and I can't always hear it perfectly. It bounces. You know this has been an ongoing situation for me, so that's another reason why I asked to be moved. I could see you directly. I watched your face. I read exactly what you were saying with your expressions, so you should have called me, you should have asked me why I moved my seat. I could have explained it to you a little better, so I apologize for...
You did explain it to me.
This didn't have to be done here, but, okay.
When I came in, you said...
Can I talk? Can I talk?
I have the floor. I don't want to sit next to her.
No, that's not what I said. I never said that. Never, ever said that, no. I moved my seat before anyone was in this room.
All right, okay, we're going in circles now, so that...
No, let me explain. I still have the floor, so...
Actually, if you're going to go in circles, but go straight.
You know what?
Go ahead.
I have the floor. So what we're seeing tonight with the resolution of public censor is that we're held to a higher standard as elected officials, engaging, so what we put on here, engaging in conduct on December 31st, 2017, that led to her being charged with retail fraud, failing to notify the super of the events, and repeatedly and dishonestly taking credit at the March 6th board meeting for the creation and placement of favorable Township in the Spotlight article. It is because of these actions that I was, I had agreed to this public censor and penalty. There's not much we can do to an elected official other than recall, and that's an awful, awful process to go to. I've seen it divide this community. It's horrible. So the board wanted to take an action and say, this behavior is not okay. We don't support it, and therefore, this resolution was put into place and put on the board for review and to be voted on. I respect you. I always have, and I respect that you have a voice, but like I said before, I stood up and said, no, you know, with prior actions that you did not shove Leon to, from what I saw, I stuck by that, and I said, but it's not okay to act in the ways that I've seen. So I was in favor of this. I think, we all owe her an explanation. Your, the only thing we can do here is to remove her from the Water and Sewer Commission, technically. There's not much else we can do, but it doesn't stop her from going to the Water and Sewer Commissions. She just wouldn't be in the role of a liaison, so I'm okay with this here tonight, so that's all I had to say.
I'd like to speak to this, too. Actually, not just yet. Is anybody else? Trustee Martin?
Yes. Concerning the public censor and penalty, I am in, I believe that she should be censored. I'm in agreeance with that, but the penalty phase is removing her from the Water and Sewer Board. I'm not in favor of that. She was elected to do a job, and part of her duties were to serve on this commission, and I think that as long as that is on this resolution, I will vote no against it.
Okay.
I think that she has been humiliated enough, and hopefully that we can get through this and become a better board at some point in time, but as long as that penalty phase, I don't agree with that, and I will vote no if that's still on the resolution.
Clerk Wright, if you have a question.
Yeah. Well, as always, any actions that we take as a board of trustee, and I know the action is, on my behalf, is never personal with anyone. This action is basically spaced on what trustee Miller has presented to you, or she read to you, but also, you've got to understand that myself, the supervisor and treasurer, we are, we're board of trustee, but we also run administrative business of the township. We're in charge, trustee, I mean treasurer and myself are in charge of negotiating the ASME contract. We deal with ASME on a daily basis. We deal with P O L C, which is patrolling dispatch on a daily basis. We deal with command. We deal with MAF on a daily basis. These same ethics articles are in their, in their contract as well, and for me, it's very hard for me to censor an employee for doing something of the same, which they would probably lose their job, and sit back and condone, to me, that would be condoning behavior at a higher standard, which we should be presenting ourselves as a higher standard. And if we condone this, it's not personal, it's the fact that we have to lead by example. We have to show our employees that we have these policies, but we don't think that we are any higher in regards to these policies than they are. We just terminated a MAF employee a couple of weeks ago for making false statements in regards to the issue. We terminated a police officer about a month ago for making a false statement, because they're sworn in as we are, and they're held to a higher standard than regular employees. We're governmental employees. People look up to us. We're held at a higher standard than just the average Joe Blow, and we have to do something. It's true, we can't, it's not a lot that we can do, but we have to do something. I don't know how long, I'm not saying it has to be forever, but it has to be, it's just, it has to be a statement that has to be made, no matter what it is going forward. I think anybody would be, would be, would be according to the same if that happened. I didn't, I hate this happened. I didn't, wasn't a part of the reason behind why it happened, but it happened, and we, you can't re, you can't just ignore it, and that's why I support this, that's...
Treasurer Bud.
I would agree with what's being said. It certainly is one of the most hurtful things that's ever happened, one of every certain on the board that we've had to censor a fellow board member who didn't quite hold the standards as high as I think they ought to. I mean, we didn't tell her not to tell the truth. We did not tell her that she needed to shoplift on the occasions that she did, and to not do something about it, I think, is, would be a mistake on our part, because we certainly aren't accepting or taking the responsibility for what's right or wrong. I think Sherry needs some help. I hope she gets some help, and I certainly hope that we can get to the point again where we trust her, because when she speaks for the board, I want her to be very careful, because she has to remember she's speaking for all of us, and that's very concerning to me, so I do agree with this policy.
Since we're going to go one more round, I obviously don't condone the behavior, and since people seem to be trying to rewrite history of this, when it was first confronted, all we asked of Trustee Frazier was that she take personal responsibility, apologize to the community, and get help.
Which I did.
You did, and then you proceeded to drag the community through the mud for four weeks while you refused to do that, forcing us to have to have a hearing on it, and then only at the end of the hearing did you finally apologize and say you were going to get counseling, which ended the discussion that night, too. So I'm not happy with what you did. I can't condone it, and I think that you were abysmal in the way that you dragged our community forward until the last second. It's like you liked the attention, and that's what really makes me worried, but yes, I am going to vote for this.
Thank you, Chair. Couple of statements that were made that are very intriguing to me. First of all, the seat change. At the last meeting, I was not asked to change a seat. I came in, and I come over here and sit down, and I was sudden, so you're sitting over there. Nobody asked me to...
Want to talk about the issue?
Pardon?
You want to go to the issue?
I'm going to the issue, but that was brought up, this changing of seats, okay? And that's part of the issue, because trustee Miller brought that forth for that reason. I'm also intrigued by the fact that trustee Miller states that she did not see Leon shove trustee Frazier, you know? So that's also for debate.
That's not what I said.
That was an allegation.
You said you did not see, okay, what was your statement?
You said Leon shoved trustee Frazier. That's not what I said. That's reversed.
I understand you to say that you did not see trustee Frazier shove Leon.
Leon, not Leon shoved.
Right. That's what I, that was my statement.
It's not what you said, but, okay.
Okay, that you did not see...
I did not. I've said that all...
Oh, Frazier shoved Leon.
Right.
Right, okay. But that is there.
At that instance, yes.
Also, the, she has endured just a whole lot of public embarrassment, and she's a very strong lady. I personally am happy she's on the board, but I will reserve my judgment until after the court date in the trial. I think it's inappropriate for us to do this, and I'm going to get off target just for a second, unless you want me to hold this, because, okay, fine, that's fine with me, because there's something...
It was non-agenda item, non-agenda.
It's non-agenda item, but there's a bomb going to go off in this boardroom before too long.
Is that a threat?
No, it's not a threat.
Yeah.
Through the chair.
Okay, yes.
You know, it was disturbing. It would have been one thing to bring up the one, the one incident, but to have Clerk Wright accuse me of shoving him after a police report indicated that it did not happen is disturbing.
That's not what the police report said.
It said there's no validation of his claim.
It said it was down to he said, she said.
Okay, there's no validation of his claim.
Okay.
I did, I did not shove...
Okay.
This has nothing to do with it.
Okay, well, that's just an example, and then the incident about the saying that I did, I took credit for something. You showed the tape. You laughed. You're the director of, I mean, you supervise the DDA, and you knew very well who published those, and so did Ms. Bud.
I did not, Sherry.
No, we did not. It says so, it's on the tape. We say, we don't know who did it. Did you really do it? And you said, yes, I did.
And you laughed about that.
Because I'm laughing right now about it.
And I apologized the next morning at 7:30. I apologized and came into the township hall to apologize to Lisa and to Susan Ireland the very next morning, within 12 hours, to tell them it was a bad joke on my part. I apologized. Ms. Bud sniped at me from the table, saying how she applauded Lisa for doing the article, thinking that I had not written a thank you to Lisa for doing the article, which I did, and which my apology was included in there. That was not, why was that dumped on me that evening, too? Why was Clerk Wright dumped on me?
That's, you've got to stop.
That's overkill.
I'm sorry.
That's overkill.
If you're done...
Because you don't like that I speak on issues that are relevant and that are truthful, whether you want to believe it or not.
I have...
At the board table.
Half of what you said is not true.
You don't like, you don't like a strong person at the table.
No, just half the stuff you say is not true. In the last comments.
I'd like to make one more comment, please.
Go ahead.
This whole spectacle, and I'm sure that's how a lot of the residents are watching this on TV, and now it's going to be written up in the newspaper, could have been prevented. The public embarrassment and harassment that she's received is more than adequate, and here we are, just keeping the pot boiling, keep throwing logs on the fire, and it makes this board look dead. and, and it makes this board look bad, the entire board, because I'm having, having to make the, uh, statements that should not be made in public. We're all making statements that, that should not be made and sticking our necks on a chopping block. And had this been removed and had the public censure and the public embarrassment and harassment that she's received is more than enough adequate for what goes on. Uh, she's done a great job on the Water and Sewer Commission, per the Water and Sewer Director Jim Taylor. And I had a discussion with him, and, and he's very, having very satisfied with that. And again, this, all of this could've been prevented by taking care of issues, uh, in, in a more direct and pertinent manner.
That is a chance.
And, and that's just the way it is. And we should, we should not have had this meeting. And this makes the second one that we've had like this. And personally, it would surprise me to get several letters or several emails from our residents about this.
We've gotten hundreds.
Uh, you're correct. We, we have, okay.
Can I have the floor now?
Yes.
I have to agree with trustee White. This could've been prevented. I reached out to trustee Fraser and asked her to take a temporary leave of absence to get her affairs straightened out and get the help that she needs. I reached out to her. It didn't have to come to the, what it did with cameras in the audience and her being humiliated and the rest of us being humiliated. That's what you wanted.
That is not what I wanted.
It is not.
If that's what I wanted, what I have called you and reached out to you and said, Sherri.
Would I have told you to hire a lawyer?
You know what? I have the floor now.
You were at the door.
You, yes, absolutely. That's my job. That's my job.
Thanks for the support, and you said, I'm just doing my job.
Sure, trustee Fraser.
Again, again, the danger is out of control.
Trustee Fraser.
Call the question.
Actually, you know, we've spoken, so we can call the question. Do you support to call the question?
Support.
Okay, all in favor of calling the question? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, questions can call. All right, we have a motion, uh, we have a motion by trustee Miller. We have support by treasurer Bud, calling for a sent, a pub, uh, public censure and penalty of trustee Fraser. All in favor? Aye? Opposed?
No.
Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee White?
No.
Trustee Martin?
No.
Trustee Bud?
Yes.
Yes for me, supervisor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on. We have reports. We have non-announcements.
I have announcements.
Okay. You have announcement? Go ahead.
I would like to announce that the, the administrative offices will be closed Monday, May twenty eighth, two thousand eighteen, and observance of Memorial Day. Also, I, I would like to announce on May eighth, two thousand eighteen, the clerk office in conjunction with the Bellevue High School hosted student council election for the six-year running. Turnout was forty-nine percent, which was down from the previous six percent for the, from last year. Six hundred and eighteen students cast their ballot for students council representative for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. The last year, seven hundred and fifty-five ballots was cast. Even though the votes was, ballots was down, the registr, registration for registered voters was up. I'm proud to announce that we registered sixty-five new voters on May eighth, doubled the amount we did last year, which was thirty. We received twelve applications to work the polls for the primary and the general elections, which was down a little bit from last year, but I'm happy with twelve. The project was made possible by area from the general donation of ballot coding and ran, and running of election source, which gave us the opportunity to test the ballots with the new equipment that was gonna, was gonna be used in this year for the, uh, primary and general elections. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, do you have an announcement?
No, I'd just like to commend clerk Wright for the effort at the high school level because it's so important to get to our young people and make them aware of the responsibility they have to vote.
Okay, I have two announcements. First of all, the U.S. Coast Guard. U.S. Coast Guard is conducting a, a vessel safety checks on our lake, May nineteenth, twenty eighteen, uh, May nineteenth from nine AM to four o'clock, and May twentieth from nine to three at the Bellevue Lake East Boat Launch. Again, the U.S. Coast Guard will check out your vessels if you have a, a vessel taken over to the East Boat Launch. I also received a phone call about five thirty today from the Detroit Wayne Mental Health Authority. We, uh, Van Buren has just been awarded another thirty-five thousand dollar grant for its summer youth program, which means it's going to be eighty-five thousand dollars this year. Last year was about forty-five thousand. Uh, so it's getting bigger. We're gonna help more kids get some work done. And so if you've got any projects in mind, we actually could use a few more. Senior citizens need some, uh, uh, some work done or stuff like that. So let us know. Okay? Um, does anybody else have any announcements? All right, uh, next is a public comment for non-agenda, the public. Is there anybody from the public? For non-agenda? Nope? Okay. Uh, next is our non-agenda, uh, clerk Wright.
Yes, um, I've always, I've always been told if, if you, if you have an issue that you think is gonna arise, you need to get out in front of it before it arrives and speak on it before it happens. Uh, in regards to trustee White bombshell, he's gonna supposedly drop in a few minutes. Uh, I'm sure he's gonna talk about a penal code that he looked up and assume that someone is, has violated a law that's, 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 that's chargeable for some ridiculous cause. I received a phone call from him on Saturday asking me to withdraw my, my motion, my own behalf of the agenda item. And when I told him that I was the only one, I wasn't the only one on the agenda, sponsoring this item, he told me, well, have you talked to the supervisor? I said, talk to the supervisor regarding what? He kept asking me that question over and over again, have you talked to the supervisor? I said, oh, we, will you tell me what I need to have talked to the supervisor about? He said, well, we had extensive conversation while we was up at MTA with the attorney firm that does a lot of, uh...
They were, they were, they were attorney firm that was speaking in a classroom on ethics and board conduct.
And something was mentioned in regards to, uh, expenses of using credit cards. The policy with, with the township has always been here, I, since I've been clerk, which is going on ten years, that any, uh, credit card purchases that don't fit in the criteria regarding what's not deemable as reimbursable must be reimbursed by the person that's making that charge. And so that's the part he's gonna, probably is gonna announce that he thinks that's a violation and that I probably should be charged or something, because that's what he threatened. He made that threat Saturday that if I didn't drop my, my stance that.
On what?
That he would go there.
Stance on what?
On the trustee Fraser.
On the trustee Fraser article, I mean, the agenda item, that he would go there. I took that as a threat, which is, is a threat. I want you to know that was reported also to the appropriate, uh, department. Because that's another thing that we shouldn't be doing as board members. We should have the right to agree, to grist, to agree or disagree on any issue that come across the table without having to take threats from anyone regarding the issue. I've never made a threat to anyone to change their vote. And I'm sure that's what you've attained until.
I did not threaten you in uniform or fashion. I asked you to bring it forth for reasons that I stated here tonight. Okay? And you have noticed that there's been mistakes on credit cards. The credit card wasn't even mentioned in my telephone call with you. Was never mentioned, was never stated. But I have personally talked to you about credit card use. And you know that, yes, there have been violations by credit card use in this township. And I have been researching it, and I have been bringing it forth. It is a two-year felony to use a credit card. A credit card is for use by an officer or an employee only. An officer or an employee only. Any other use of that credit card could be considered embezzlement. And, and I intend to study this, and I intend to make sure that our credit cards are being used appropriately. And you ask me, well, didn't you do this when you had a credit card as a supervisor? And I replied to you, no, I did not have a credit card as a supervisor. Never had a credit card with, as a supervisor. And all of my, my, my credits went through the treasurer's office at that point in time. But yes, it is my opinion, my opinion, that there has been systematic or systemic abuse of credit cards in this township. And I intend to, uh, study it, intend to, to, uh, look at it, and I will send you the information when I have clarity on it. And it goes back to nineteen twenty-seven on, and I forget the bill number right now. So, we have, we have.
Nineteen thirty-one.
Public, that's Public Act three twenty-eight, I think, of nineteen thirty-one, but there's also one from nineteen, uh, nineteen twenty-seven. And there's been a couple of updates on it. But yes, and, and a, as you know, you did not reimburse the township for, uh, improper usage of your credit card until it was brought forth several times, and you were several months late on reimbursing your credit card.
That's not true.
It is true. It took you three or four months to reimburse a, a credit card. It is true. And, and you did not reimburse until it was brought forward.
You didn't reimburse until we, we noticed you that you needed to reimburse. The treasurer called you.
We have one person talking at a time.
The treasurer called you.
Well, that's right.
Treasurer?
That's right.
I mean, not treasurer.
And, and we should, and I have the floor. But I will continue studying this. And, and when I have everything all lined up and everything, I will bring it to the supervisor and, and be sure that, that he, he takes action on it and moves forward, because that is considered the way it is. So, so you, you can't charge one person with something and not charge another person with something. So, uh, it'll be that.
First of, first.
And if, and if it doesn't, and if it doesn't pan, pan out, and it doesn't pan out. But, but I am studying it and doing research on it.
Why not?
Okay. Are you, are you finished?
Yes, go ahead.
So, I'll be waiting on your, your, whatever you're gonna bring forward and make sure you're ready to refute whatever you said. For one reason, that's why we have attorneys in here tonight. He has already done major study on the issue because I knew it was coming. But, uh, we haven't charged, uh, really, we didn't charge trustee Fraser with anything. I didn't charge her with anything. I think Taylor Police charged her with something. But I didn't charge her with anything. So, uh, we keep making the statement that the board charged someone. We haven't charged anyone with anything.
You charged me with it.
That's not.
And we should have one person talking at a time.
That's not our, that's not our job. We're not charging her with anything. We only responding to our ethnic policy, which you, I can't seem to understand that piece, the ethnic policy of the township. Nothing to do with the court. The court would take their, and to this, the matter into consideration at their time, at their convenience. We have nothing to do with the courts. This is Van Buren Township and the policies that we have within the township. Uh, if you want to, you can talk to the attorney later tonight. Uh, we can talk with him together, whichever one you wanna do. But I have no, nothing to hide regarding my credit card uses. We just finished, we just have our audit, uh, meeting, final meeting today, which was giving a, what the, what's the, what's the rating?
Audited.
Well, audited, which is the highest rating we can get. I have the paperwork here tonight to, to, uh, talk about some of the things I wanted to discuss. A question last night was asked, why do we have a surplus? We have the, the reasons why we have a surplus. We, and I have them here tonight. If you're interested and you wanna know why we had a surplus, I can kinda go over that with you. Because the reason why we gotta modify it, which is the best rating you can get from your auditors, which rates, which audit, audit, audit every department of the township, not just the clerks, not just the treasurer, but every department of the township. Get audits, get an audit every year. And if they go through line item by line item, any expenditure, any, uh, charge that's been made, and to make sure that those, that's not, that's any discrepancy based on the policies of the township. They go, they master the expenditures and the payments based on our policies and make sure that we're following the policies that we have set for by the township. And that's, that's what, that's what, that's an audit. Nothing was brought forth by my department or anyone department. But the reason why we have a surplus of one point, what is it, nine million dollars was because.
One point nine.
Revenue, total revenues. We budgeted total revenues to be sixteen million eight hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Uh, they came in seventeen million two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. You can't forecast that. That's a great year, but we're, we're glad of it. Part, partially due with royalties from, uh, Waste Management, which we are great, we are glad to see how Ms. Clarence and, and audits, which she's always here. That was, that was, uh, six hundred and, what was it, six hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars? No, I was, I take that back.
Was this on the agenda?
No.
Yeah, we're gonna be covering.
This is non, this is non-agenda.
Is that on the agenda? I mean, I don't think this is.
And the, and the, and the rest was, and the rest was from the, uh, departments that came in on the budget, which our budget last year, proposed budget was fifteen million five hundred and two, eight hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. We amended that budget to fifteen million three hundred and fifty, seven hundred and nineteen thousand. The actual came in at fourteen million three hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and sixteen, nine hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars below budget. Every department came in below budget except for the, um, accounting, which is kinda hard to estimate because we don't know, a lot of those charges are based on bank charges, which, which we can't never tell at the end.
Chair, call the question.
You know, I, I unfortunately, you guys do not have.
He's over at the, the three-minute limit.
Excuse me, but I have heard him talk for twenty minutes, and I've heard you talk for fifteen minutes.
This is not agenda.
We are under the old rules.
This is not agenda item. I'm finishing up.
It's not even an agenda item. It's not even on, on agenda.
Next week, five minutes is gonna be the, the limit.
Are you, are you talking about the seventeen budget?
The seventeen budget. You asked last night why, why do we have a surplus?
I sent them an email. In fact, I sent everybody an email today.
The reason why you got a surplus is nine hundred and sixty, nine hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars plus seven hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. It's worth your surplus. That's why you have a surplus.
Thank you. And I would expect that to come from the treasurer, not the clerk, who's trying to backpedal and cover himself.
It doesn't matter who it comes from.
Okay.
We are, all three of us was in the meeting.
Through the chair. I just have two questions for clerk Wright.
Oh, no, 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 no. This isn't a non-agenda item. You have time to speak, but no questions.
No questions. No questions allowed.
You're allowed to speak, but you're not allowed to ask questions. I don't wanna do that.
No questions.
Okay, thank you.
Because he knows the answers.
Okay, is there any, anybody else with this comment?
I, I have a couple of comments.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. I think we've had enough.
I think whoever's had their chance to speak. I had a motion to adjourn. Uh, I have a second, non-debatable. All in favor? Aye? Opposed? We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.